Alright, we're gonna get started if we could. On behalf of the Ocean Fire Chamber of Commerce, I would like to welcome everybody to the Ocean Fire Chamber of Commerce County Commissioner Report. I'm Will Capel, member of the Board of Directors of the Chamber. I would like right now to introduce the committee. We have Steve Cohen, Gwen Cordner, who's the President of the Board of Directors, and Teresa Tomtella, she's also representative of the Ocean Fire Association. I'd also like to recognize the Executive Director, Liz Kane Bowlen, who without her help, we would not be able to put this together today. First, I want to go over a little bit just rules, so everybody knows the rules. Tonight, we're gonna ask one question from the board when we get things started. And then each of the members, whether up here you're candidates, are gonna have at least, they're gonna have two minutes to answer the question. And we're just gonna start one end and go to the next. We ask that your questions are less than thirty seconds when we open it up to everybody else to ask questions. Also, I'd like to recognize some people that are here. First off, I'd like to recognize Judy Ball, who is retired as for the District Five County Commissioner after twelve years. Also Barbara Richardson of the Democratic Central Committee is here. And we also have two candidates, Tom Goulis, who is an unopposed candidate for the Berlin, to the Chamber. And we also have Frank Knight for the Orphans Board. And also, we have Charlotte Capel for the Register of Wills running unopposed. At this time, we could all...
We also, excuse me, we also have Dave Stevens, President of the Ocean Fire Association.
That is, okay, my fault, I'll play. Dave Stevens is the President of the OPA. We'd also like to thank the OPA, they've sponsored all the food and refreshments. They've also sponsored the thing for the video that we do have here tonight. And also, there's one other member of the board here, Larry Leece, right over there, a member of the board. If everybody can stand in front of the Leesons?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, now we're gonna introduce some of the candidates. Directly here to my left, Diana Purnell, she's a candidate, candidate Commissioner for District Two. She's the President of the Berlin Community Improvement Association, and a member of the VOTE, or Vote Board, the Germantown Heritage School Foundation, the NAACP, and the Worcester County Tourism Board. She was instrumental in establishing Brave, which is an after-school project, a local after-school project for local kids, and is currently Chief Judge for the Worcester County Board of Elections. She's also a lay servant from the St. John's United Methodist Church. Diana is the co-author, along with her husband Gig, of the Purnell Moving and Hauling Company and Purnell's Used Furniture Warehouse. She and her husband are also inventors, are co-inventors of the deodorant product that helps you move whatever you need in all manner of materials. Alright, next up, Bud Church. James Bud Church, who first elected as the County Commissioner for District Three in 2002, and he's currently President of the County Commissioner, and he has served in opposition since 2009. He's a past President of the Worcester County Board of Education, is currently a member of the Tri-County Council, the Lawrence Shore, the Worcester County Board of Health, and the Salisbury Ocean City Regional Air Commission. He's also the past President of the Coastal Association of Realtors and the Maryland Association of Realtors. And is currently President of the Colville Banker Bud Church. And we also have two, two from Districts Two and Three that are not here tonight, and I do have short byes there, Michael Maycrance, he is a candidate, candidate Commissioner for District Three. He's been a career firefighter and paramedic for the Ocean City Fire Department since 1988. He's the former President of the Career Firefighters' Paramedics Association. He's currently District Representative, Representative for Professional Firefighters in Maryland. He serves as a Public Safety Pension Representative for the town of Ocean City. He's been a Maryland real estate agent since 1977. Also, for District Two, Lorraine Purnell Ayers. She pioneered the implementation of Worcester's Minority District. She has a master's degree and is a financial analyst, and she's running District Two. This is Steve Cohen.
I'm here to introduce District Five, District Six. District Five is Tom Wilson and Chip Rotino. Chip is the editor of the...
Current attorney.
Current attorney. The editor of the Courier, his wife, Susan's been married twenty-seven years, they got children. He co-authored a book, My Time, My Service. He's the past President of the Ocean Fire Chamber, and he's been living in the area for twenty-five years. Tom Wilson, he is the President of Diacnea, which is a charity for abused women and men. He's been living in the area for eleven years. He was a budgetary financial manager with the US Peace Corps, and twenty years as CFO and Executive Officer of the African Development Foundation. Living here for eleven years. District Five. District Four, the two running are Barbara Stockley, Shockley. He's the current Commissioner since 1998. He's a farmer and poultry, forty-five years. He's also Worcester County Bus Contractor, has a wife, has three children. He's a member of the Worcester County Farm Bureau, Delmarra Poultry Industry, and he's on the micro panel dealing with the prosperous in Chesapeake. And Ted Elder, he's the President of the Worcester County Bus Contractor Association. Married for forty-five years, enjoys about three, three children, and three great grandkids.
We'd just like to say, the reason we're doing it even if the candidates aren't here, we gave them out to Smith &amp; Biel. So even if they are here, that's why we are here.
Commissioner Merrill Lockfall was not able to attend. He is currently a Commissioner for District One, wants to send him to his greeting. District One is a Southern waves district, and he also serves as the Vice President of the County Commission. He retired from service after nineteen years as a Worcester County Road Superintendent. He's been active in the Pokemon Fire Company for over thirty-nine years, is a Deacon at Lynn Hill Baptist Church, as I said, he's opposed. Also unopposed is Jim Liting, District Six Candidate. And Jim is a lifelong resident of Worcester County, and has been married to his wife for four, four years. They are parents and grandparents, which will be fishing early and spending time with family. Jim has been a Worcester County Commissioner since December 2010 to present. Also a member of the Worcester County Planning Commission, Order of Appeals, and retired from the Bureau of Surveying and Designing. And we also have Jim Tressick, who is an unopposed candidate for District Seven. He's been a full-time resident for thirty-four years, and is the owner of Robert and Tressick Building Contractors Agency. He served two and a half terms as City Councilman, is past President of the Ocean City Council. He served in Forests and Recreation and Parks as Police Commissions as Councilman, Chairman of the Recreation and Parks Committee, two-term President of the Ocean City Lions Club, Members of Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Association, Ocean City Development, Member, past President, Order of Trustees at London Methodist Church, and married to his wife Cheryl for twenty-seven years, two children.
Alright, now we're gonna get things started. We're gonna, we're gonna ask one question to the candidates, and then we're gonna open it up. Do you guys ask what questions you'd like to ask? So we'll start with Mr. Purnell to my left. This is from Ocean Fire Chamber of Commerce. How would you, as a County Commissioner, bring full-time jobs to the county?
As County Commissioner, I would look at our economic development. And I would also look, look at what's happening within the county or near the county. Right now, we have Wallops Island, so a lot of things taking place down there. So I would look to try to draw some of that interest down this way, this job, and to draw people to the county to stay with the county. And take a peek outside of the box, look at those people that are employed down there to see if they have wives that are teachers, or husbands that are teachers, and bring some of that information within the county. So I'm always looking for something new, there's a lot of new things happening out here. So work with the work of the other Commissioners, try to bring a bunch of in, out of jobs.
Okay, um, yeah, everybody here, what should you say?
Very doubtful.
Do the lights.
I heard it, it was gonna end. That was a dress rehearsal.
I'm sure that's a dress rehearsal. But I am very interested at the, and there is, there are jobs outside of the county that we probably could encourage to come in the county. But I am very interested in Wallops Island, because there's a lot of development taking place down in that Virginia area. And we need to bring some of that up here. We need to try to bring some of their living facilities, you know, get people to come up here and stay in this county, bring them up here. And I'm always looking for, with the school. Maybe some of those men or women have a husband or a wife that were former teachers and would like to come into our area, they'd bring a new attitude. And we need that very much to the county. So I would be looking, you know, outside of the county to bring something in, and working with the County Commissioners, because what, seven heads up, that should be better than one? And we should be able to bring something in there.
I think so.
I think so.
We're just gonna pass the microphone down, and everybody can take a chance and answer the question.
That's an excellent question, and I will tell you, those of you that don't know me, know that I'm very candid and upfront when I have to say. When I was first hired as a County Commissioner, I was very, very, very disappointed in the economic development that was going on within the county. We had an economic development person that I didn't deal with at the time, was doing the job. I campaigned for two or three years to hire a new one. We did that, that new person is Bill Badger. Bill Badger has hit the ground running. Bill Badger, who's considered a County Commissioner now, for the boards, where Bill Badger was recognized as the Economic Development Person of the Year. He brought eight thousand jobs to Annapolis. We were fortunate being able to hire Bill. Bill has hit the ground running. We are working every day, the current County Commissioners, bringing new economic development to the county under Bill's leadership. Last week, we met at a private business in Ocean City with a group of individuals from Dallas. They were, principal of that company was in Pittsburgh. He saw the Ocean City commercial on TV. He went to, he Googled Ocean City. He identified Worcester County as a place that he'd like to do business. I spent two hours with the President of that company, brought in another group from Pennsylvania. To, we, I was there to help Bill promote Worcester County. Wallops Island is a huge potential growth for us. I have a niece that's one of the project managers for Orbital. I encouraged her once a month to try and bring in business to Worcester County. I'm in the real estate business, I'm very interested in economic development. The economic development that I'm interested in is smokeless industry. It's, it's high tech. I think I convinced him, sorry.
You didn't contain the rabble link, you just wanted to rabble.
Really, I'm looking at high-tech industries, for the kids that are going to school here today, to go to college and come back and have a job in their own county, in the store.
Worcester County has the lowest average wage in any jurisdiction state. Remember, April is the highest. And frankly, it's appalling. I've been at Diacnea for years, for six years, and I see it all the time. People can't support themselves, can't support their children. We need to do better, definitely need to do better. I know Bill Badger's working hard, but demonstrably, it's not enough. We can't continue to look for seasonal jobs, we need to look for good year-round, full-time jobs. Bud is absolutely right, we need to look at the smokeless industries. I look at D3 Corporation, which has expanded substantially. They do internet services over in West Ocean City. That's the kind of thing we... Worcester County has some outstanding quality, we like it. We have outstanding school system. We have taxes that are relatively low compared to the rest of the state, and we have relatively low cost of living. There's no reason we not attract good businesses to come. But we need to reach out personally to them. We're developing a new facility at Diacnea, and I've been told by several people who are in the business that it will take twelve to eighteen months to get licensing permitting before we put brick upon brick. And that's just not good enough. We need to be more business-friendly, we need to work harder to get businesses from outside. Thank you.
As a small business owner, I certainly recognize how important it is to have businesses and employment here in the county. And I'd like to echo what Commissioner Church said regarding Bill Badger. Over the past two, two and a half years, that Bill has been in that position of economic development. He's done a fantastic job of attracting businesses to at least look in our area. We also have a great deal of imagination and ingenuity within our own county to spur and spark and ignite business opportunities within the county. Several, about a month ago, I had the great opportunity to sit at a graduation of our Step Up STEM Program, which is an internship program for county students with area businesses. This is a program that is funded by the county. It was rescued after federal funding had been cut last year, and the county stepped up to fund it so that about twenty-eight, I believe, of students within our community, seniors in high school, juniors and seniors in high school, as well as college children, college kids, could participate within a number of businesses, including AGH, including D3, including Maryland Coastal Bays. And they had the opportunity to work in our community. But much just as importantly, of the experience they gained was the experience that these businesses gained by having them work on their behalf. To see the accomplishments of those students and those interns at that graduation, and to hear what they accomplished was outstanding. There's a great deal of opportunity and potential within this county. We have it in our own schools, which are the best in the state. And we have a great opportunity to unleash that. We also have a responsibility as County Commissioners to apply pressure at the state level, because quite truthfully, our state, the way our state regulation is, businesses don't want to come to Maryland to do business. And as wonderful a place as Worcester County is, and we've lived here for a long time, we have, we need the assistance of the state. We have, we have decreased, we have fallen down the scale as to a job-friendly, employment-friendly, business-friendly environment. We need to work together as Commissioners, as well as our state legislators, to improve what we can do in the county. Thanks very much.
Did I let everybody else say? Chambers, Cobbers, I, certain, Jake, doing. And I'd like to thank all the supporters that, some of the, many of my supporters are here tonight, me being here unopposed. But, I have, Commissioner Church has already referenced one thing that I campaigned on four years ago, that was our economic development department. It was basically inactive, there was a website, had members that had passed away on it, that's how bad it was. So when I left it, I made it one of my top issues, reorganizing that department. I hired the Director and Lieutenant, Mr. Church, Mr. Ball, we all decided to take that great man to Badger and build a fine job. It doesn't happen overnight. As a business owner myself, for over nineteen years of surveying land planning business, I also saw that, you know, it was difficult getting through the process of tax reform and everything. And I've been very active on that for the last four years, trying to make it easier and helping businesses get going to the county. I'm a member of the Tri-County Council, and, as well as Bud and Churchill. And we are very active working with Wallops Island right now. We are trying to, yeah, throw in that facility, give it to Worcester County. So that's something we are working on, but this also doesn't happen overnight. And as Candidate Purnell said, I was interviewed by the Teachers Association, probably two or three high school primaries. And I was, you know, I was, I lined up being, they thought I was an add-on, but I'm not. But they, one thing they, they said was that they were upset. Some of them had children that tried to get jobs to teach at Worcester County, did not get a job, they hired somebody out of... And she's correct, we need to hire more people that graduate from our colleges here. And they may just be fresh out of college, give them a chance. Thank you.
Well, the first person that I met with after it was declared that I would be the County Commissioner was Bill Badger. And we talked about technology-based jobs here in the county. The students that grow up here, learn in Worcester Technical Schools, come back here, get jobs, something in the technical field. Certainly, we don't want manufacturing outside of beaches and areas. So we really need to work to get technology-based jobs. But it starts up at the top. More, more businesses are leaving the state of Maryland every day. They're leaving, they, they can't do business here, taxed out of business in the state of Maryland. Need to work with our delegates, with our state senators, and hopefully, new governor, to have tax breaks for these companies to come to work, come settle, and enrich. I also think that we need to, and here in the county, we need to increase sports marketing tours. It's a huge untapped income for this county. As somebody who had children that played travel team, traveled brawls, traveled basketball and such, I know that I spent many, it's fifteen weekends a year, traveling to these other destinations to tournaments. And when you travel to a tournament, the team has twenty players, and they travel with their mothers and their fathers, and dads and uncles and grandparents, brothers and sisters, and it's room nights, and it's meals in the restaurants, to help Ocean City and the surrounding area become more year-round. We have tours, that type of tours. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, James, for holding me in. I guess I'm gonna give you a little history lesson, because I've been here the longest of anyone up here. When I first became a Commissioner in 1998, there was a survey done as to why businesses would not come in Worcester County. And Ray is nodding his head back there. There were a few people actually from Ocean Pines on the committee that beat Worcester County for the survey. And they found one reason, and that was broadband. In 2003, I was President of Tri-County Council at the time. Sonny Bloxham was first President of Tri-County Council in 2002, when it was far behind us being the second President of Tri-County. And at a Maryland Association of Counties meeting in August in 2003, we had about ninety people in our room, including two United States Senators, Congressmen, and everybody else. And it wasn't the fact that we had the meeting, the humorous part was what actually made the headlines in the Washington Post and the Sun papers, because I stood up and basically said the eastern shore of Maryland was a third world country. And they publicized it. Well, lo and behold, certain people didn't like that, I'll leave it at that. But sometimes you gotta say certain things in order to get movement out of Annapolis. Long came, about a year later, some funding. And the initial funding for broadband actually came by way of Senator Barbara Mikulski, who hooked up, gave the funding for about five and a half million dollars that would hook up Wallops with the idea of Wallops having mine, Wallops packs rip. Okay, basically, and you had 9/11 in the middle of all this, also. So the timing was good, we got the initial funding. Fast forward a little bit, 2006, Maryland Broadband Cooperative actually was formed. I have been the Chair of that association, I am currently the Vice Chair of that association. Everything that you have on fiber runs through their lines. The goal of this, at the end of the day, is to be able to take a laptop anywhere in Worcester County, flip it up, and have access. That's the goal, my goal hasn't changed. Now, I'm gone by, I'm a little old, got a lot less hair, but still, that's my goal. That's one of the goals I hope to achieve while I lead, thank you. And Mike's here, buddy.
Yeah, Michael Maycrance shared, the question, Mike, was, how would you, as County Commissioner, bring year-round jobs to the county?
Thank you, I'm sorry I was late, I was putting some signs up for a bud, and I was just lost track of time, so I'm late in here. One of the things I always thought would be a way to try to increase the economic growth in the county is, there's a lot of small businesses that make up the primary components of the county. A lot of people make their living that way, and there's a variety of different businesses that are involved. You know, Tom's in the front row here, he's printing and mailing. There's plenty of contractors in the community. When the economy was really good, everyone was making money because of construction. The National Association of Home Builders, we put a survey out around time, and it basically said, to summarize, there's twenty different businesses that make money off of construction. From the developer, to the guy who surveys the land, to the contractors that build the home, to the person who ensures the efforts, the grounds makin', the sky. There's a lot of that, in this county, a lot of people make their money outside of tourism and the construction industry, real estate, things like that. So, to go along with my goal of providing more affordable housing, I think if we look at the zoning codes and make the adjustments we can and try to encourage some of the new construction to occur again, and I believe in smart growth and controlled growth, I don't think we ought to overgrow the county, lose our quality of life, and, you know, make it so unbearable, there's so much traffic, where it's no longer fun to live here. But I think that construction is one key component that would get a lot of people growing in the county, and the economy kicking. It's great, the high-tech jobs, Wallops and things like that is important, but small businesses are the backbone of Worcester County, and to encourage that, and to help the small business people try to get back on their feet, and try to get some work, to get that moving again, I think that's the key.
Alright, now we're gonna open up questions to the crowd. My colleague, Mr. Cohen. My colleague, Mr. Cohen, is going to have a microphone. So raise your hand if you would like to ask a question, or if you want some microphones too, you can ask. We asked that, you keep it under thirty seconds. And one last thing, I would like to recognize, Sharon O'Hare of the OPA Board is here. Please don't kill me.
Just in advance, we have a map of the districts, and we have the description of where voting polls are gonna be, if anybody wants to review it, so, in here.
Those of you who know me, I'm Tom Sanders, I was killed by a fire. I'm not comfortable speaking in public, however...
You got thirty seconds.
I've heard several of you speak about a juiced-up economic development market and director, and that's, that's really good. But I haven't really got results, can you tell me, anyone tell me, how many new businesses have we lured into Worcester County, and how many jobs has that created?
Anybody can answer that?
Okay, I'll take a shot, and if you guys want to jump in, that's fine. Okay, in Pokemon Industrial Park, we have... Okay, in Pokemoke Industrial Park, we have four businesses down there. We had a motorcycle business that came in as a trial run in industrial park, I guess about 2010. Didn't do much the first year. They do custom bikes, then all of a sudden, everybody decided that recession was over, and a lot of people turned sixty, a lot of the guys did, and quite a few of the women, by the way, if you looked at Bike Week last week. And so they've had a good time building bikes down there. We have a plastic molding place down there, Lenzar down there, that has expanded. We used to have a Beretta, but unfortunately, the state of Maryland took care of that, sent it down to North Carolina. There have been a couple businesses in West OC, and Bud can probably do better at that than I can, and I'm trying to think in the south end. I would say probably in the south end, since Bill has been there, we've probably added, and I may be low on this, twenty-five, eighty jobs in the south end. I will say Wallops Island, we have a plan, and this does answer your question. In 2007, the commissioners actually did a plan, as far as Wallops Island. We put Wallops here, here's Wallops, and we drew a circle, a forty-five-minute circle of Wallops. Plan is literally upstairs, planning and zoning. Looked at housing, looked at how many, what kind of jobs, looked at population, what we could take in comfortably. We looked at schools, when we were looking at the schools and everything. So there is a planning place for Wallops. And we've probably gotten a spin-off of Wallops, I'm gonna say, into Worcester County. Twenty-seven percent, I think, is the number that I, that rings in my head, and I may be off a little bit, is the number of people who actually live in Worcester County that actually worked for Wallops, that's Worcester County-wise. And Bud?
I've tried to think of the business, and one of our businesses deals with public relations, they'll make commercials, can't remember the name of the business, new business.
Bishopville.
Bishopville. And I apologize, that's my district, I can't think of the name of that. We've been very busy lately, working on a new plan for having a train excursion from Portland to Stone Hill. That's coming along well. And Bill's also, there's a lot of things you don't know about, Bill's done as far as arranging loans for businesses that exist. That's, that's a very good accomplishment, I think. Having small business loans for people, Hope is a program. He's developed a lot of things that you don't know about, and I apologize, I just can't remember the names of all these businesses. We've actually given, or to Bud might give.
Harrison's one, Harrison's one for the sign printing, and he threw out last year.
Yeah, actually, there's probably a lot more going on in the county than you're aware of, because it isn't something you see just pops out of the ground. The good news, bad news is, there is new, new industry, not industry, new employment coming to the county. Doesn't appear overnight. Unfortunately, timeframe that we mentioned earlier, takes time to get this developed. One of the industries that was going, gangbusters in Pokemoke was hardwire. During, during the, during the war, they were putting out, they were employing lots and lots of people. They were doing the Humvees. They are now in a conversion to another type of defense industry that we have helped them bring that new industry in. That's a long turnaround period. The shields, the boards that they developed that are bulletproof, they are selling those all over the country. We purchased twelve thousand of those so we could get on the board with them to say that Worcester County is part of that development. Their, their, that development's coming along very, very well. The industry that none of us can remember, in Bishopville doubled in size in a matter of seven or eight months. I don't know why we have this lapse in our brain. Bill Badger, if you notice at the, on Route 50, the empty stores out there, I communicate with Bill Badger, and as he comes, you communicate with Bud. There's hardly, every ten days, he sends me an email about another potential customer coming to town. We sent Bill Badger to Las Vegas for the largest trade show about bringing new businesses into the community. He came back, one of his folks was, again, not again, not, uh, Bass Pro. They came within an eyelash of coming in. Bill's only been here a couple of years, he's done a remarkable job in two years, and I think in another sixteen, eighteen months, we'll see a lot of employment coming in.
I'm sixty-three years old, and I shithead the voter memory, I was losing. One of the things that happened here recently that Bill was instrumental in was just five o'clock. It was bad breath, it was gonna be shut down and closed. Bill worked hard for eight or nine months.
Yep.
And he brought a company in here, and it's all, it didn't go to foreclosure, it gets opened auction, they're gonna renovate it, and hopefully create more business and stuff things over there. That's, I'd forgotten about that. And I will tell you, there's a lot of stuff going on out on Route 50 that Bill was shared with the commissioners, but it's in negotiations. And he, it takes time for him to do his job. I mean, he just, he has skirt, he has bus trips, tours, he takes people around, shows them everything, he brings them in, businesses, entrepreneurs. But, for example, out on Route 50 right now, there's negotiations going on that he can't talk about, because, yeah, I, going to deals. But there's a lot going on, Bill is doing a lot of work.
I have to say a couple words? Sure, anybody can say anything.
It, you know, it sounds like Bill's doing great work and is really moving ahead, and I'm sure he is, if I guess, great reputation. But a lot will be here, it's coming to Worcester County, is retail. One of the reasons wages are so low in Worcester County is our two biggest industries are hospitality, two of the lowest-paying industries in the country. In the past few years, we've lost, Memorial Select, which closed the pharmaceutical plant early. South Moon Under is moving their distribution plant out of Worcester County into Wycomico. And, you know, we talked about the loans we're giving to small businesses, one of the very first ones went to Keiko, which is great, great, but it's more seasonal jobs. That's not what we need. We need good, year-round, full-time jobs. Anyone else?
And it appears that the current commissioners have put it on the back burner for now, in Route 113. I see the development, it's coming. Lickerson's development there for all the medical facilities is now drawing many people, many smaller businesses, but it is going, the focus of that development will be PMRCs, bringing all of their medical services that they have throughout the county now into that one area, more traffic. We have, right across the street here, we're going to have, yep, okay, pretty much, okay.
No, your, your.
Okay, I would not, both Chip and Tom Wilson as prospective commissioners to answer that question.
I'd like to take that. And we'll open up to everyone. Chance for Tom and me. So we'll let Tom Chipper go first, and then we'll open up to everyone else.
I guess I could add to that, the development of 589.
Thank you for the, for the question. 589, I was on the, I was appointed to the 589 Stakeholders Group back in 2007, looked into what to do with 589. And a plan feasibility study was prepared, and it was presented to the county commissioners, I believe, last year, the year before. The commissioner, the, this plan called for setbacks, what to do as far as zoning and planning was concerned. What it didn't do, though, was provide money for the project. And this past Tuesday, the State Secretary, Transportation Secretary, Jack Smith, made a presentation, he and his staff made a presentation to the county commissioners for about an hour or so. And I can tell you, having sat in the commissioner's room for the past four or five years, there isn't a commissioner up there who hasn't brought 589 forefront, anytime they've had an opportunity to talk to state highway administration. We're looking at about a $330 million project when it's, but there is absolutely no money for the project. Commissioners have asked for the money, they have put it on the priority list, it is second behind Route 113. To say that the commissioners have chosen 113 over 589, I don't think is really accurate, because if they could do both, they would. It is a state project, the state has said that they recognize the need, but quite truthfully, it might not be for another twenty or twenty-five years. As a commissioner, as the commissioners, over the past five years that I've sat at the, in those benches, they have pushed to have 589 looked at and widened. And I can tell you that as a commissioner myself, elected in November, I will join them in pushing as best we can. But quite truthfully, we need the help of our state legislators to help get the money down here for that particular project. We have a lot going on with 589, and it's changed an awful lot in twenty-five years that I've been here. So, I recognize, thank you for the question, we have a lot to do, quite truthfully, the commissioners, and after November, I think you'll see the commissioners pushing continually to get 589 addressed.
Thanks, Jeff. If you look at my card, my little palm cards over there, very first item on the agenda is urgent action 658. We have a casino being expanded, we have PRM CPs going in, Barvestine has zoning to build more homes back behind King Richard Road. Jack Burridge got a zoning for his, to change some of it to commercial. There's a lot going on. Every time I go out on 589, it gets frustrating, because it's, you have backups that go with Route 50 all the way up to Campbellburg beyond. We need to do better. Most major landowners own 589, love, people have seen it, Jack, a couple of parks, they're perfectly willing to give up the land, get this thing built, because it's a win-win for them, for everyone else. We say we can't do it, but of course we can. We need to use all our resources to talk to the state, promote this as an urgent matter. The bridge was closed in, on Route 50 this summer, we saw traffic backed up everywhere, Route 90, 589, Route 50. The whole transportation network in northern Worcester County is fragile, we need to do something about it. Ocean City needs it, Ocean Pines needs it, Worcester County needs it. We all need to work together to get this done, and we can do it. I'm quite confident, we persuade the state, we try hard to get the money and put it there, but it has to be our priority.
Bud, do you have anything to go with this one?
Yeah, I really hate to disagree with my friend Tom, that we can do it. Let me give you a couple of examples of why we can't. Every one of us, when we buy a tank of gas, we pay a highway user. When links were really, really good, and before the state started taking that highway user fee, putting it into the general fund, we had money, we would have been able to do it. Let me give you a couple of examples. At the height of the, of the good times, we were receiving about $5.5 million for our roads. Things were good. At the level, when the state started taking our highway user fees, our money, we went for $5.5 million to $249,000. And you tell me how a county with about three or four hundred miles of roads can maintain their roads, build a new one, Worcester County. It can't be done. What we need is to change it to state, to stop taking county monies, to put them in the general fund, to fund the deficit they can't afford. That's where it has to stop. Not at the county. Every county commissioner has lobbied for 589. Hasn't happened. It's not the county's fault. We pay our highway user fees. We put the money in, they would pay for that highway. The state is taking that money, paying the debt. That's where the money's going. It's not the county, it's the state. We would do it today, we have our money. I'll repeat, our money.
I was gonna say, one thing about the road priorities that most commissioners, is it pays a lot of the safety as well. It is, it can be easy to travel on 589, there's a heavy traffic load, but I don't think anyone will dispute, there's been numerous people killed on Route 113 over the twenty-five, thirty years, and their aggressive plan to dualize that and prevent that from happening is considered in my mind, as a citizen, one of the highest priorities, and that should be at the top of the list. Your safety over, you know, your inconvenience of traffic and things like that, and certainly what Commissioner Church said is absolutely true. You can't operate and keep the roads up to speed when your funding's been cut so significantly as the state has cut Worcester County.
Route 113, first section got dualized in 1971. The section that comes from Pokemoke up to Shand landing was done in 1971. Okay? Now, the second section, northern section, started up again in about 2007, all right? Just before things started to turn down, we got funding for that. That's after thirty-some odd years, okay? 12 and 113. The day that I came through there with a school bus and saw where they had the sand, couldn't tell with just the flags, you had to wait till the sand went down to know where the road was gonna go. I came into the commissioners at that point, and I remember saying these exact words, "They're gonna kill somebody out." Sixty-two accidents later, they finally put up a satellite. It took five years, six letters from the commissioners, and me literally going across the table at the Secretary for Transportation, where Norm Conley grabbed me, he's knocking the hell out of us. That's what it took. So if you're talking about state funding, let me tell you something about state funding. You can wish for a lot of things, but when it comes right down to it, we, the commissioners, have never put 589 on the back burner. We've always said 113 is our priority, because a lot of accidents are happening out there, 113. And quite frankly, it's overdue to be dualized. And 589 was next. And that's, that's our, had been our priority, that still is our priority, okay?
I have a little different look at it. I'm not throwing arrows at anybody. We had a gentleman who come, came out there to put a casino, he would have jumped through a ring and fired it. And I believe that the county at that time dropped, dropped the ball about making it dualized itself. I read today that we are not going to get any of the money from the table games, because it's been out there at the casino. If that is in fact true, then before he puts a shovel on the ground to put those table game buildings up, he should have to dualize 589 for itself.
As the junior, as a junior commissioner, I could tell you, county commissioners, mine is sixteen years ago, well, and the rest of them, every year, 589 has been a priority. And Black County has changed their code of planning documents. 589 currently has approximately a fifty-foot right-of-way, which is on a flat, and it varies a little bit, it's not exactly fifty foot everywhere, but we can just say twenty-five feet on the satellite. Right now, under our code, if you build new business on 589, you're required to say it's an eighty-foot right-of-way, and then you're required to start your setbacks for your building and your, whatever you're doing, from that line, which is an imaginary line, the state has yet, but I have one dollar to purchase, right away, one dollar. We had our big doggy pony show Tuesday. 589, when you look down at your monies, 2014, zero, 2015, zero, all the way to 2030, zero. Route 50 Bridge, zero, 2014, 2013, which is an important issue. We also brought up Route 90, the possibility of dualizing Route 90. Route 90 already has the right-of-way when it was built. It was built in such a way that the highway is on this side, if you're looking at it right now, the highway is on this side, and it's built to be expanded the other way. The state already has the right-of-way. Bridges were designed with the primary... Bridges were designed with the pram next to the north railers. The bridge is not like the break part right there, it'd just be added on to. $0 in that. We can do, we can do, but I kind of put it sometimes that, you know, the county commissioners are the bottom of a big garbage can. I'm serious, there's a lot of good stuff in a garbage can, and I think there's a lot of good commissioners, a lot of good people, but it goes from the bottom to the top, and we, and you people need to put people in there that are gonna help us get what we need to do.
Can I address one issue with reference to Jim? It's, it's kind of amazing how things happen sometimes, but we, we were agreed this past week in executive session about table games coming to pushing downs. We were told there's not gonna be any additional money, but, but what struck me the most was that we'll probably in fact lose money. Because table games cost three to four times as much to run as a slot machine. A slot machine doesn't require a dealer. A slot machine doesn't require the wheels. A slot machine doesn't require people to run it. They're saying that when the tables come in, the revenues at Ocean Downs will drop considerably. So, I was under the impression, because I'm not a gambler, I've been in Ocean Downs one time, to cut the ribbon, because I was against gambling, they wouldn't let me cut the ribbon. But, but in reality, if you're thinking there's more money coming, the report that we received was it's actually gonna be less money coming. So you need to think about that.
What else? Good morning, crowd. Everybody ask a question?
I don't need the mic, I'll be loud enough. Ray, Ocean Pines. The way I look at it, gentlemen, we can forget about anything that's gonna happen on roads here next one year. I don't think money's gonna come there. However, we are looking at a $3 billion expenditure for a new Shaw Elementary School, 500 students. Supposed to be beautiful building, gonna be very nice, but I question in my own mind whether that, at this particular time, is necessary. I'd like to see.
Well, basically, any candidate can answer. Basically, as a candidate, what would your take on something?
Problem with the roads is they, and I can remember years ago when they started to talk about dualizing 113, and it took forever. It took forever and it took a lot of lives, the boss, and the same thing with the past fight. But when it comes to the school, we need that school regardless of whether we can widen that highway or not. We need that our kids not subject to doing kind of an education. So we have to fight. The struggle is, as one of the candidates said, you need to start looking at the people that put in an effort. And so we can look, so we can get some, strike some help, do what we need to do. That school, we need that, we need that start.
The county commissioners have been very, very frugal. I think they're probably the most conservative county commissioners in the state. We take a lot of pride in that. We're not gonna build a school that we can't afford. The gambling money, and a lot of people have wanted that talk of the gambling money, was dedicated to the schools. We have never, at least Virgil's been there longer than I have, we've never financed a school for 15 years. When we went to the bond market this winter, I can't remember the rate, but it was the lowest rate that any county had gotten in years because of our fiscal ability to pay back. The gambling money, and because we paid down a lot of our, our schools that we've already built, because there's 15 years of being paid off, we have money to build the school. Your taxes are not gonna go up because we built a new school. We've been very conservative, put money aside. The casino money is, is paying for the debt service that we have, plus the money we've set aside. There will not be a tax to you or anyone else, thankfully, Mr. Churchill, because of the way that we manage our money.
We need a new school. Shaw Elementary has had temporary classrooms out the back, years and years and years. Population of Ocean Pines is increasing. Ocean Pines is changing. It's going from a vacation community, community where four more homes or have year-round residents, and the reality is, they have kids. Kids go to school. Shaw Elementary is deficient in terms of the connections, its data, and variety of other things. I think moving ahead to place it is the right move, and the county commissioners have already made the right decisions. Susan and I have three children, each of whom attended Shaw Elementary School. Each of our three kids was in one of those nine trailers that are out back. We need a new school, and the county commissioners, a couple, about a month or so ago, approved feasibility study to replace the school as opposed to renovate it. The cost, the estimated cost of the school is, as Ray said, about $40 million. That to me seems like a lot of money for 555 students. Now, quite truthfully, it's my understanding, it's been my experience, that the county commissioners have very little say over the design of the school. To my knowledge, the school has yet to be designed. There have been no elevations done. The only thing that's been done is the feasibility study. I would offer, as much as it pertains to me, as hopefully an elected official, commissioner representing our district, District 5, that has a majority of students going to Shaw School, that I want to see a new school, but I very much like to see an accountability for $40 million. Seems to me that we can build a school for less money. We don't need it to be fancy. We don't need children who are going to classrooms that have wild designs on the wall or marble on the roof. They don't need circular hallways, and they don't need circular walls. They can do just fine with walls that are right angles and 45-degree angles. But I don't think, I don't think that we can do anything but replace Shaw Elementary School. And if I have grandchildren that go to Shaw Elementary School, I sure hope they're out of those trails. I really do. So I hope I've answered your question right.
Ray, was your, I guess I didn't understand your question. You're talking about 589, you're talking about spending $40 million on it. You tried to say that maybe we can spend the money on 589?
No, no, no. I don't think anything's gonna happen on roads for a long time.
Because 589 is totally state. But, candidate Tino, just, I've echoed what I've been saying three years. I voted for the first budget, my first year, I voted for the budget, and probably out of inexperience, the next two years, I did not vote for the budget. And I agree, we worked. Snow Hill High School is $52 million. It's designed to hold approximately 700 students. It's projected by 15 years from now, that not have over 360. $52 million. I re, I, I, my, my daughter and I have been studying law, teachers, educators in North Carolina. I had opportunity to talk to superintendent of schools in North Carolina, which is, is a different state, they have related work, all of the things that. But, I was talking to the superintendent of school, "Have you built a high school lately?" "Yes, we have." "How much, how much did it cost you?" "57 million dollars." I said, "Well, that's not too bad. We're building, we're building a high school. It's gonna cost us $52 million." "How many students does this still, this school part of hold?" We, as Mr. Pretino said, the state requires us to spend a lot of money that I think is unnecessary to be building. We don't have to build a public hall. We put the, we need to put the technology in the school. Our schools are supposedly number one, Worcester County's number one, Maryland, Maryland's number one in the country. And we got it that way by supporting them at schools. Why are we changing where we're teaching our students? Why are we having common? If it was working so well, how come everything's changed? We need to change it in that.
Well, we need to get our children out of trailers. It's distracting to be out in that trailer to learn. We need to get them to a centralized building that has all the technology that every other school in the state, country has put. Technology changes daily. I, I always say you can buy a laptop, but by the time you get home, it's outdated. So, it's a 30-minute ride. So, we need to stay up with that, and our students deserve to have all the technology that they have at any of the schools. I agree with the price tag on the school might be a little high. I think that until we really sit down, what kind of design, you need to have, you know, somebody come up with it. It's just speculation at this point in time now. The school needs to be replaced. It's not the last school that's gonna be replaced in this county. It's one of them, unfortunately. But I think that you're gonna see, when Pokemoke and Snow Hill Middle Schools, that need to be replaced, I think you're gonna see that move into the high schools. I, I just don't think that you can substantiate having a school that costs $52 million, 384 students. And that the problem with that is, is not just today's price. The problem with that is, is today it costs eight, Boston County $8,000 to send a kid to Stephen Decatur. It costs $14,000 to send one to Snow Hill, $15,000 to open. Because if you have to have all the same amenities down there for the high schools, the teachers on hand. Now the teachers like it, they don't have any kids in their class. But you have to have them there, and you have to give them the same amenities that everybody else. So you have 1,300 students at Decatur, 300 some in.
Okay, little history lesson. All right. Stephen Decatur High School, we renovated in 1999. County $17 million. That's bombed, Decatur. Ocean City Elementary School, bombed $23 million after 2003. This is off the top of my head, so you gotta give me a little off by a million dollars. VOTEC, we did in 2006 for the $28 million. We actually ended up getting some federal money for that because at the time, they were into vocational education. And we ended up getting probably the most money we've ever gotten from the state or feds through, we called it VOTEC. Pokemoke was done in 2009 at $36 million. Snow Hill, the county share, county share, was $46 million, and we went to the bond market and they started. Why in the world they started in the winter? I have not a clue. I, I suggest not to do that. Jumping to frustration, if you ever wanted to be frustrated, call for the guy named Dr. Lieber. This is the guy who runs the education system for school construction in the state of Maryland. The county commissioners decided that we'd have a little talk with Dr. Lieber because the price was actually outrageous on Snow Hill High School. So Jim, Bud, myself went, and he came down, and we had a little chat. He basically said this, and I'll give you the shortest version I can. Number one, you have a plan for Snow Hill High School, it's to renovate it. If you don't lose that plan, you have to go back to square one, which is three years, by the way. Because once you get on a list, you get a plan, you're three years getting to the point where you can actually greenlight a school. All right? So number one, you go back three years, you go back to, go back space. Number two, we actually looked at a piece of land next to the elementary school. At the time, it was for sale. We could have bought the land, built a brand-new high school for $4 million less than what we're renovating Snow Hill. They will not let us do it. They will not let us do it.
That's true.
Plain and simple, they will not let us do it. As far as Shaw, it needs to be done. I'll just say that. And, you know, right now, we're bonding about 11,9, our bond payment for schools is about 11,9 a year, and that is, we're, we're using that, we pay that, and Bud was correct when he said the casino money, that money that the county gets goes to the bond payment on VOTEC. The bond payment at VOTEC is 2.5 million. The amount of casino money that county brings in is actually about 1.9 million. Okay? So it doesn't quite pay the bond payment.
Not to be repetitive, because everybody's beating us up a little bit, but I agree with, with what Joe says, it's, it's not acceptable to have children, you know, learning in trailers. And unfortunately, it seems like since you built a school, within a couple of years, it's already too small. And obviously, this area is growing. Ocean Pines continues to grow, there's gonna be more showing, getting into school, and to have that in an atmosphere that, a school that was built in the 70s, we definitely need to keep ahead of that and have an atmosphere that's, you know, of learning. Whether it needs to be $52 million, that's a dispute. I'm certainly sure that it can be done, you know, by trimming the edges here and there, but we do need to keep up with the infrastructure. Schools are an important part of it, and we have to stay on top of that and try to keep it within the budget with our regulations.
Keith Kaiser, Ocean Pines, I'm a recent west coast transplant to the area. When my wife and I first got here about six months ago, we kind of struggled to find a primary care physician, and nobody was accepting new patients. And it took us, took us several months. Specialists are not a problem, but just primary care physicians that, you know, that just provide basic services for a family, they're kind of hard to find. So in the vein of new businesses, in the vein of expansion, not minimum wage jobs, is there something that the council can do to encourage medical provisions for, for medical care accounts?
We're gonna have to everyone into campus also.
I'm still on the board of the Northern Hospital Foundation. They are trying to expand a number of facilities to address that need. My wife just came in the room, she's, her wife's in Connecticut. Her primary doctor is in Connecticut. She took a spill the other night in the parking lot of Deep Grove. I prayed that the camera was on so that she had a bruise on her face, they wouldn't think that Mr. Bud Church punched his wife in the face. I went and asked, certainly asked if cameras were running, and they said yes. I had to call in a favor to try and get someone to see my wife. I can tell you, the hospital is working diligently, bringing in additional physicians. I can also tell you that West Ocean City, there's gonna be two new facilities, both over on the construction, at least one or two over on the construction now with primary care doctors. So they're, they're working on that every day. There's new doctors coming in. We, we had a hospital board meeting, can't remember the days today, but they told us then that they are interviewing two or three new doctors now to come in to our, what I consider our, that we're working on that every day, and I'm very sympathetic to your need if we express that.
I'll just say a couple of words. I've been president of DCC for quite a while, and we work very closely with AGH and with the Department of Health to provide health care to some of the areas in the county. I have a couple of friends on the, on the Atlanta General Hospital Board, and I know they have been, I will echo what's said, they have to work very hard to expand their facilities, bring more doctors in. They have a facility going in on Route 50 over in West Ocean City. And they're doing whatever they can. They're, they're behind the curve, no question about it, but they're, they're working very hard.
You've been here six months and haven't been able to find a primary general specialist. We've been here 25 years at that same school, so it's not a problem. It's new to the area. I'll just echo, there's really nothing more than I can add to this, but I'll echo with Tom and Seth.
I'm good, you don't have to. No, I just, I really believe, see, I, I, I think it's hard. I mean, doctors don't wanna be doctors. They, they rather, they, they specialize, they don't want, they're, they're just concerned about insurance, the Obamacare. My primary physician right down the road is Dr. Clark. It's amazing, you can't get an appointment for six months, and I'm, I'm already under his care. So I, I, I actually, I, we're doing everything we can. We, AGH was looking at properties down the road there on 589, which I know everybody talks about a recent project. But, and the county commissioners voted to have the zoning, and then AGH wanted to go in there on my Christmas.
Yes, they did.
And we approved the zoning. Well, that, that was appealed, went to court, and the judge overturned our decision about the zoning. Let it appeal again, and it went back up to Annapolis.
Let it appeal again and it went back up to Annapolis. And they ruled in our favor again that we were prepped to give it zoning. Now it's being looked at again, but you have a property that wants to bring in doctors and bringing good paying jobs. And we have people fighting. But we are trying. I just don't know.
People fighting it at the state level?
No, it's local.
You want a history lesson?
Before you ask a question, I'd like to recognize Judy Davis, candidate for State Dalian. If you'd like to stand up.
I apologize if I digress, but I want to go back to education for just a couple of minutes. I was amazed, astonished recently to learn that sixty-five percent of the graduating students from Moosewood County High School going into Warwick Community College are required to take remedial training. So the question is, what do you have to say about that? We spend half the county budget, about fifty-one percent of the county budget. We give the schools everything the state demands and requires of us. Our county expense is the highest per pupil spending in the state of Maryland. I heard numbers a while ago that surprised me. I thought it was sixteen thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars per student. It's the highest in the state, yet they're graduating seniors that cannot get into our community college. We also give them a million and a half every year. So would anybody care to comment on that?
I'd like to, I think, okay. Go ahead, we'll get the best of us.
Okay. Two comments. You're correct in your numbers. It was sixteen thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. This year's budget is sixteen thousand, just shot at two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Great, thank you. I start going to Warwick's steering committee, okay? I'm on a committee that basically, we just finished a very successful campaign, very six million dollars for Ford. And I'll give regrets to Ray Lloyd for staying. I was praying he wouldn't leave, he's done one job for it. Problem they're having is this. It's English and math. Those are the two things that the kids are having problems with. And if you look at the way they're, I drive school bus, I've been driving school bus twenty-six years. I go back and between middle and high school, I sit there and talk to my kids. I say, okay, what'd you learn today? Okay? And it is, they need to get back to some basics because some of the classes that we're having, it's not really doing them any good. And it's math, unfortunately, and I have been beat over the head and beat over the head because I don't like discipline codes to do when they just play that. And I'm not crazy about common core either, you also know that. But we get told as county commissioners, quite frankly, in a polite way, it's none of your business, it's the school for us. I'm not exaggerating about that. That's how, you know, you fund it, we take care of it. All right? And I would say to you that you're correct. Those numbers, I knew it was around fifty-five percent that they were having to do remedial classes, English and math were the things that stripped them up. And it's also a rare issue, by the way, it's not just for Ford. But the good news is, with a little bit of work, they, it appears to be the math more than the English that they're having a problem with. And it's, it's the simple stuff, that they're worried about trigonometry instead of multiplication tables and division tables.
If you notice earlier when I was talking about, I said, if we are, this county is number one in the state of Maryland, if Maryland is number one in the whole country, I said, if. Your numbers, I don't know, sixty-six percent, Dr. Lloyd told me, and probably a little over fifty percent that needed to take courses. You talk to Salisbury University, they got the back site percentage. Kids that graduate from our school, they may take eighteen courses. I think it's like twenty-seven percent of those have spent the first half of the year taking courses. So there is something wrong there. I agree with it for some.
Grant, you're absolutely right. We have a problem in our school system in that regard, that kids can't come out of high school and not have to go to remedial classes. Fortunately, that question really should be asked at Board of Education. I know that you and others have asked that question repeatedly. Have you gotten an answer?
No.
And I really think that we need to apply pressure to Board of Ed because they're responsible for the education of our kids and our superintendent, quite truthfully, works for them, not the other way around. And I think it's very important that people like yourself and others apply pressure to the Board of Ed to ensure that our kids are being taught the fundamentals so that they don't come out of, that come out as a senior graduate having to spend time in remedial classes. I don't know that the answer exists at the commissioner level. As you well know, it's a Board of Education challenge and one that they should be held responsible for and they should be continually questioned as to why our kids are not being able to come out without going to remedial classes. Does that answer your question?
Well, I think that commissioners can put some pressure on them. I mean, you fund them.
You know what? There is absolutely nothing wrong, Grant, with saying no at times at Board of Ed. And we can say no. What the ramifications of that are is to be determined. But there is absolutely nothing wrong with saying no. Have I answered your question now?
Yes.
Thank you.
In my previous lifetime, and some of you know this, I spent ten years on Board of Education. Eight of those ten years I was president of the Board of Education. It was a lifetime ago. What, and I just heard this maybe two weeks ago. They were talking, it was a program on education I taught on TV. They were talking about, during the time that I was in education, as president of education, our country, the United States of America, was in the top ten in providing education to our children nationwide, not Mr. Kim. We have dropped out of the top thirty in the world. That's where the problem lies. I'm gonna be very honest and very candid. I think that our nation is lowering the standards nationwide. I'm convinced of that. And they're lowering their standards to bring up the averages. And that's where the problem lies. It's not right. It's not the county that's doing it. It's not our local Board of Education. It's our national leaders. They want this country to appear that we're doing much better than we are. We need to start at the top. Generally, I like to start at the bottom with grassroots of anything I do, where the rubber meets the rug. This case, problem doesn't lie at the local county level. A little bit at the state level, but it's the national level we need to be worried about. The Asian countries, the Scandinavian countries, the European countries. They are beating our butts because they're actually raising their standards and raising their education while we're raising our standards and lowering our educations to meet in the middle. That's where the problem lies, my opinion.
Education is one of the main factors I, because I came down here, I'm from North Carolina and I'm old, so I was educated in the school system. But I was educated, learned myself. I learned my school system. But I tell you, one daughter. And we end up taking her out of the school system. We send her to a Christian school because while they were teaching her in school and while we were trying to teach her at home to make sure she understood what she was doing, was button heads. They wanted her to go through this, didn't care. They could not tell me that they cared. They did not care that if her paper was messed up or whatever, whatever. But I came through a school system where you had to make things illegible. Took your timing, it worked, worked the problem, you had to think about the problem. Switched her out, put her in a Christian school. Because I wanted my child educated to deal with this oral system. And she's done very well. Now, we started a program that worked with county, that worked with different organizations in the county, that worked with business community. And it's called BRID, Berlin Reclaims Attitude and Value in Tennessee. We put a program together, after school program, that dealt with kids from age six to twelve or fifteen. And the idea was that we had those kids in the summertime and we had to teach those kids the remedial stuff. Teach them the reading, that they'll sit down and work with them with reading, with math, English, all of that. They should, that should never have to happen, but it did. And we worked with them. That program is still going on and I thank the county commissioners because they still support us in that program. The school took that program. They took that program, it was so well, that they got awarded from the state for that program. And when they said no child left behind, they started screwing things up real good. Real bad. So we have a lot of work that we can do and I'm a chip. We can say no, we need to look at that, because our kids are not being educated. And I'm concerned about our sign at Stephen Decatur where everybody comes out and see a world-class school system. It's not world-class if we gotta take remedial courses at Warwick.
I've heard several of you talk about casino funds, local impact funds. And it was just my understanding that with the introduction of table games and relocation of the casino in Baltimore, that additional funds were coming down. It's also my understanding that unlike previous funds that come down, all of that money will go to the county. In the past, and this is like deja vu all over me, I sent him this room six years ago talking about the distribution. We received ten percent of the five or five and a half percent that came down, we being Ocean Pines. My question is, did you feel that that distribution, the current distribution is fair? That's question one. If you, if you did, then do you think it should be done again? And if the answer to that is no, then Commissioner Church, how do you tell me that if we're not going to get those impact funds and our funds from the casinos are gonna lose value because of the table games, that we're not paying for whatever else you're gonna do with that money?
You know what? Commissioner Shike, he gave us a history lesson last Tuesday. And that, yeah. He investigated this. I'm not passing your question on. I can answer your question, but he had done some research prior to our meeting on Tuesday in reference to that exact question. So if you don't mind, I'd rather.
I just wanted to answer.
Okay, good.
And anybody who's.
Commissioner Shike did a whole lot of work.
Actually, Virgo and I both asked you to look at S B One. Just real quickly, since the new casino opening, which the county's share of the money is going, they say eighteen percent, it's gonna add to whatever it comes as listed, the hundred percent. Three hundred and some. Three oh nine to the county, one oh three to Ocean City, and fifty-one five to Ocean Pines. So right now that money is distributed, so three percent to the county, three percent to Ocean City, ten percent to Berlin, and ten percent to Ocean Pines. The money is far to help the impacts caused by the casino. That money that's gonna be coming in is still gonna be divided in the same way. Ocean Pines is gonna receive approximately fifty-something, fifty-some thousand dollars extra from the casino opening up there, from the slot money. What Mr. Church was talking about, and I tell you the truth, I don't really know what the answer is officially because we're trying to get it. We're hearing that the, when the table games come, that we do know twenty percent of it goes to the educational place, the state. The other eighty percent, we're hearing goes to the casinos. We don't know if we're gonna get one penny. I read the bill, S B One, it's very complicated. I understand that we're gonna, we'll probably get two-hundred thousand a year from print artists. When PG goes in, which could be late as two thousand and nineteen. Okay? And possibly when the table games come to the county or whenever that company building has to be built yet. That we will maybe eligible for a five percent of their table games. The question is that we've asked as county commissioners is, how does S B One affect the distribution of that money? Does all of, does the money go to the commissioners and not be divided equally like it is required to now from the slots? We don't know. I, my, maybe Virgo's right on four, but my answer is right now I do not know and we're asking for an answer, a gamble. We want an answer, how that money is done.
My lady's issue, sorry.
Okay. As far as eighteen percent, let me answer the eighteen percent. When the casino in Baltimore, where she opened on August twenty-sixth, literally the next day, we started getting a portion of the eighteen percent that we were not getting before. Based on twenty-fourteen estimates, based on the twenty-fourteen, that would be three oh nine to the county, one oh three to Ocean City, fifty-one five to Ocean Pines. Okay? Assuming that plays out into FY fifty, okay, and that's June to June, all right? Now, in S B One, and it reads this, the way it reads is this. Local impact grant, local development council amendment contingent on the issuance of video lottery operation license for facility in PG County. Once that license is given, means once place opens, okay? The following will occur in the amount to be distributed. Allegheny, two hundred thousand, Cecil, one thirty, Towne and Prairieville, seventy, Westbrook County, two hundred thousand. Okay? That, we know we're gonna get when PG opens. What you're talking about as far as table games, we don't know. We've had one person tell us the county's gonna get five percent. We've done another person tell us the county's not gonna get anything. Okay? And quite frankly, Bud was absolutely, I think, Bud mentioned it, once you put the casino table games in, people go down and play one-armed madness, okay? They only take so much money with them. Yeah, you're gonna have tournaments at table games, but it's not gonna bring in what you think it's gonna bring in. And all those lofty numbers that we heard in twenty-twelve when S B One was up there, they were throwing numbers out that were so outrageous, I remember sitting down with Jerry Mason, who can't administrate the topic. No way this can happen.
But I guess my question is, whatever amount it is, some way this is.
I have not a clue because that is not our call. That has to be, that bill would have to be amended at the state level. That bill would have to be amended at the state level for the percentages like it is now. The wording basically says, and we can't find the five percent wording, this is actually in the code. I can show you this, Sonny Glock, the lawyer, pulled this out for me. We can't find the five percent, what you're talking about.
And I'd like to also remind the crowd, this is a county commissioner candidate for, this is my county commissioner meeting.
I got everything I could out of it.
Good evening, gentlemen. Everybody looks so nicely dressed. That's my question, going back to education. My name is Sophia Christian, I'm a real estate attorney. My name is Sophia Christian, I'm a Realtor, mortgage broker, and a business officer for Sarah. And can you hear me? And I have been on the Eastern Shore from Baltimore for the last 25 years. I've seen a lot of changes. My question is, I've had three students in Stephen Decatur, two graduated from Stephen Decatur, one is a senior in Stephen Decatur, and one is in the eighth grade of Worcester Prep. My question is, how about we raise the standards for our children? I didn't know how much it costs each child to be in Stephen Decatur. That person sitting right there knows what he sees every single day on the bus. Day in, day out, he sees what people look like that get on the bus. Yes, their questions are their, their standards. We can raise the standards by the uniforms. I always ask, what can we do to get uniforms? And also raise the standards in the school with bullying.
Well, I think the question is how would the candidates, if they were commissioners, raise the standards for the local education, like saying?
Yeah, I think that's a school board question.
All right, I'd like to ask a question if I could. Everyone up here has talked about working with the state. Everybody's got to work with the state. As a candidate and as a county commissioner, how would you work with the state to help the local economy, the local, and to help Worcester County?
Answer Steve from the state.
I mean, much of what you're saying, Commissioner, saying time and time again, and it's absolutely true, is that it's hard to do much when you have financial limitations and other limitations imposed by the state of Maryland. And the only way you can try to get through that is through open communication. I know some of the delegates and senators have done a good job keeping the commissioners responsible for what's going on. But that's truly the only way you can effect change, I believe, in Annapolis, is through the elected leaders and an open line of communication to try to relay what the concerns are of the citizens and the commissioners, try to affect those, those good bills and bad bills that occur in Annapolis, which ones are going to hurt Worcester County and which ones are going to help them. Unfortunately, it seems like there's more and more bills that are being passed down to the, to local government agencies that harm that, either from overregulation or from financial constraints. And that's a difficult, ongoing thing. And I don't think there's a, a straight answer I can give you on how we can do that other than to try to continue to put the pressure on Annapolis with, you know, the leaders that are going to, to push the agenda of Worcester County and have an online communication.
Raise hell. Most of you know I'm a Democrat, okay? I probably, and I, I think I'm very virtuous. In the last four years, I've opposed just about everything that's been put down in Worcester County by the administration. From Land Maryland, which is the largest land grab in the state, to the sprinkler systems, to just about anything else. I've opposed it. Been very vocal about opposing it. They don't like me very much. But that hasn't stopped me from opposing it. I said, right now, I'm, I'm on a committee for the, for the Foxworth management tool. And not, not to make this any larger than what it actually is, literally the fate of the poultry industry on the Eastern Shore of the state. And it's an hands of 11 people who is, who are basically right now working with Emo Derek to come up with scenarios, what's going to happen in, in, with the poultry industry if it were to pull out, say, a run. And the stupidest idea that's ever took place was the 5-cent chicken tax. So I don't know how actually you have communication with someone who is a delegate or a senator and stands up on the senate floor and basically proposes a 5-cent chicken tax without realizing the ramifications of what that person is doing just to start a conversation. You've missed the front page of the Daily Times. I think there are three days in a row about a 5-cent chicken tax. But it shows you the level of not caring, that's the only word I can think of, about the Eastern Shore. And you just scream, you scream some more. And you do what we did with Route 12 and 113. And basically, they just got tired of us, to be honest with you. You know, after five letters and all the screaming, at some point, somebody will blink. That's the one thing I have learned. That's the one lesson that, with Route 12 and 113, and that's not like to talk. At some point, somebody will get tired of you screaming, and they will actually do something.
I think first and foremost, most Worcester County commissioners have to work together. They have to have one voice to go to Annapolis. We need to take the party politics out of Annapolis, out of the federal, and just so that everybody can start to work together for something. Everybody's so worried about being their idea or defending somebody in their party, they're afraid to do it. And that needs to change. The people in this room are the ones that can help that happen. You need to elect politicians as senators, as delegates, that can go, that will go up there and represent you and not your party's person.
Joe just said exactly, the problem is, I could beat it down, but we can only do so much as county commissioners. But we, Virgil asked it aside and aside, and at the Sun Hill meeting, the last meeting that night, and we did raise hell. And we actually got them saying there was problems, and we got them saying that night, I stood up, asked some questions, and got them saying they had to have a light, and they got them light. So we do have a raise hell. Sometimes raising hell doesn't work. I was, there's so many things that have done an effect to the economy in, in all Maryland, especially the Eastern Shore. Number one, the number six, over $16,000 per student is the highest, and we get the least amount of money, I believe, that any county in Maryland leads to make for the state. I mean, we pay for it, you pay for it. And, and I'm not saying the results we're getting is great out of that money. That's just one issue. We're rich. Well, we, they think we're, they say we're rich, but we, the only reason we're in good shape is that we are because we have Ocean City and we have Ocean Pines. Eight thousand lots in here, all paid out. I was on Task Force Sustainable Growth, the waste water disposal, there was 28 members. I went up there every, twice a month for six months. And every vote was 24 to four, 25 to three. And there was three of us that voted against all this stuff. I, my brother-in-law, or my brother-in-law and sister's son is getting a build a home. Nowhere near water. The septic system is gone because of that bill that was passed by our legislators. Actually, it was done by executive order. Went a $9,000 septic system, went to $25,000. That's what he's going to have to pay for a septic system. That's the kind of stuff our, our state is doing with it.
Will, would you mind repeating the question? How would you, as a commissioner, work with the state to help the local economy and help Worcester County?
Answer, answer that question. Throw it over that question. Tell me how to answer that.
All right, Bud, I will. For the past five, six years that I've been down at the county commissioners, I've seen the state come down and push down on us, us being the county mandates, unfunded mandates that have come down. Now, I'm a little biased about this because I'm rather conservative. This community, this county is relatively conservative. We have an Eastern Shore mentality that says, you know what? We can do things ourselves down here, but you darn well better listen up there. We need legislators who are working on our behalf at the state level. Now, I've seen legislators who have represented us on the Eastern Shore come down to the commissioners, and I've heard what they've had to say. And I've had the opportunity to report on what they've had to say. And I've had the opportunity to look back on what they've said and what the results were. And quite truthfully, there's a great cast between the two. I really think that we need different leadership up in Annapolis representing us here on the Eastern Shore. I made no bones about that. And I do think what Joe said about working together, we do need to work together in one voice. And we've seen a lot of that, quite truthfully, at the commissioner, at the commissioner level. They work together when they're talking to the state, and there's a lot of pushback, and there's a lot of talk about pushback. But quite truthfully, if we really want to get something done, we have the residents of Worcester County that we need behind us as elected officials, if I'm elected in November, to help us get that message across to our state legislator. So it's not just a county commissioner problem. It's not just a legislative problem. It's all of our problem. And all of us have a responsibility to make darn sure that those in Annapolis hear us from the other side of the bridge. How was that, Bud?
That was all the way through.
I like what I heard from Joe, we all need to work together. I would agree with everything that's going on in Annapolis. We're in marching, that really doesn't make a lot of sense for us here in the shore. But one thing we can't do, we can't sit here in Worcester County or Sun Hill and tell everyone in Annapolis, you're stupid, you're ignorant, your children are ugly. By the way, would you send us some money? We need to figure out a way to work with them, persuade them of our, of what we're doing and how they can help us do it better. We have a unique opportunity here in Ocean Pines. We have so many people who've come here through elsewhere in their own context to help us represent that. What Chip said about civic engagement, getting, getting people of Worcester County involved and getting them angry and talking to their legislators, it's going to work, okay? We need to do something like that. I think we can do better.
Folks, I'm going to go ahead and explain. I want to tell you what, and I'm not telling you this for any other purposes except to make a comparison. I sat on the Board of Directors, Million Member Association. I sat on the Executive Committee, Million Member Association. I represented five states as the vice president of the National Association. There was personal governance of 70,000. I had more cooperation in my five states, National Association, than we have with our state as a county commissioner. Either fortunately or unfortunately, I was elected this year by the National Association of Accountants to serve on the legislature. Which meant that Nora Lockwell and I went to Annapolis every Wednesday to, done legislative meetings in Annapolis during the session. I was subsequently appointed to a tax subcommittee, the wrong committee for Bud Church to be appointed to for me and from the Eastern Shore. I was also appointed to an initiative committee that, that determines legislation, it's going to force the state legislation. I can tell you, I can't tell you the number of times that I would have asked, wait a minute, we need to consider that. That doesn't appear to be correct. That's not good for the Eastern Shore. That's not good for Worcester County to be cut off. And not, you're saying being polite, and your sister's not ugly, and your brother's not ugly. I was the ugly kid in the class, and your children, I was all of that. I got zero attention. And, and the, the, I think the reason I got appointed to this committee is because the, the maker of presidents from the Eastern Shore, the appointee to this committee is to be an ally for him in Annapolis. Let me give you a couple of examples of how the state has killed the Eastern Shore. Teacher pension plan. The state took $100 billion out of that, and I think this is right here, 2012. They took $100 million out in 2013. 2014, they took $300 million out of teachers' plan. Next year, they're taking another $300 million out. I can't tell you the rest of the story. We can't, we don't have a voice in Annapolis. Regardless of what we try and do, we don't have a voice. They're going to end up taking a billion dollars out of teacher pension plans. You know what they did? They raised our portion that we have to pay to fill the deficit. Now, how bad is that? They take the money out of the teacher pension plan, they're going into the deficit. They raised our proportion that we have to pay. That's money we have to make up from the taxpayers. The Worcester County commissioners have been so conservative that we've absorbed that. We've cut, we've cut capital expenditure plans. We've cut road payment. We've cut, we've cut, we've cut, not to raise your taxes because we all work together. We have Democrats, we have Republicans. You have one of the best county commissioners, in my opinion, humble opinion, for the, in the country, in the state. Our problem's not at the local level. Our problem's at the state level. You can't tact yourself out of a recession. You can't tact your way into prosperity. And the state thinks they can. That's what the problem is.
I don't need, I don't need advice. And it, the former student, my school chair later had my... Anyway, in all respect to... And you were there. I know, I know, just keep quiet. In all respect to unopposed candidates, Jim, Joe, you're already live. So everyone thinks you're wonderful. So I'm just going to ask you, in the light of two minutes, each, if each of you would explain why you think you are the best candidate for your position.
I think that I'm the best candidate for this position in District Two because I was a part of the growth of the beginning of District Two. I've always worked in the community. I've been a business president in the community for 30, 31 years. And I think that I'll bring something to the commission that maybe we haven't had for a long time. Because I am a very active listener. I will carry my, if I believe in something, I will be right out there with blood and buns standing out there raising hell. And I'll do it the right way because I believe in this county. I want to see this county prosper. I want to see this county grow. And I know that economic development and investing in our students is one of the best things to do. But with all politics, the local, we have to learn to do like a lot of the politicians in Annapolis and in DC. We have to learn a lot of these people. Sometime, we're going to have to figure out how to get there ahead still. And I believe that I can get in there and get less than I can try to make that happen.
I think I'm the best candidate because of my experience, having been a county commissioner for almost 12 years, fact that I've been elected as president for the last five years. I think my knowledge of the county, having served 10 years on the Board of Education, they were the largest, highest percentage of, of taxes that you pay for. My experience that I gained, my knowledge as being a county commissioner, having worked in Annapolis. When I was president of Maryland, I was in Annapolis most of the year, lobbying for Realtors. Fact that I've been a businessman, pay taxes in this county, whether I ever wanted to pay, but having run a successful real estate company for, since 1978, I've sold hundreds of millions of dollars in this county. I'm very ultra-conservative. Don't spend your money. Any, I wouldn't spend your money any more than I would spend my money. I'd spend your money the same way I'd spend my money. I drive Mercedes, I drive Fords. See some of the mirrors again in the back. I've been a business leader. I've been president of the Convention Zero, the President of the Reprovision Council. I've got the background, I've got the experience, got the knowledge, and I'd like to do it at least for another four years.
I think I'm the best candidate because I have the experience and knowledge to do a good job. I'm a fiscal conservative. I mentioned many before, I was five years of responding as director of Peaceport. The interesting thing there, I joined Peaceport staff two weeks before Ronald Reagan was elected. And he decimated our budget. And I worked with his appointee, Brett Ruthie, who's a wonderful woman, strong Republican. And we managed to adjust the budget, work with Peaceport, fund even more volunteers and more programs than we had with the bigger budget. There's lots we can cut. I believe in fiscal accountability. I believe in transparent government. I've been working since I came here with a variety of organizations in Worcester County. I've been president and treasurer of Deaconia. I am treasurer of the Lower Shore Land Trust. With Deaconia, I bought almost $2 million of outside funding to Worcester County in terms of grants and bond bills and so forth. I know how to work with other people and get things done. That's what I'm good at, getting things done and working with people. And I think I can do a good job for Worcester County and for Ocean Pines. Thank you. and for Ocean Pines.
I believe that I'm the best candidate to represent my community that I have lived in for the past twenty-five years. With the exception of the current county commissioner sitting here at this table, there is nobody in this room that has spent more time down at the county commissioner meeting, listening to deliberations of the county commissioners, sitting through public hearings about issues that affect our community. I've listened to staff recommendations, I've listened to how the county commissioners have discussed and interplayed with staff, I have had the opportunity to meet and interact with county staff. Over the past nine and a half months, I have spent time with just about everyone, the department heads and their staff, learning more about their departments and the effect that they have on our county. I'm a business person, I'm a small business person in this community. I've been involved in this community for the past twenty-five years, I've been president of this organization, the Ocean Pines Chamber of Commerce, at a not-too-pleasant time, I might add, at the beginning of the reception in 2009, when I had the opportunity to commiserate with a lot of business owners who were very much wondering how they were going to spend or be able to survive the next day. I've seen some of those businesses go out of business. I've been a board member and former treasurer of the Ocean Pines Veterans Memorial, the Worcester County Veterans. I was co-author of the book, My Time, My Service, which is a collection of biographies of those honored at the memorial. I helped with the creation of the dog park here in Ocean Pines, as well as the skate park that exists in our community. My kids grew up here, and Susan and I decided to live here twenty-five years ago, and because of the experience I've had at the newspaper, having owned the paper for the past fifteen years, I've had the opportunity to sit in on Ocean Pines Association meetings. And for those of us who have sat at Ocean Pines Association meetings, I can tell you that that is a real interesting experience, and I see a lot of heads shaking here. So I've had the opportunity to see the overlap between what the county does and what Ocean Pines does, and I know that I can represent our community really well if I have your support. I thank you very much.
Worcester County currently, the economy of Worcester County basically runs on farming and tourism. And for a couple of years of back picks, it's popping back and forth depending on the price of corn, soybeans, corn right now is three dollars and fifty-four cents, soybeans are about ten bucks, I had about four thousand wishful going to Purdue today. We haven't seen three-dollar corn since nineteen ninety-four. That gives you an idea of what kind of year the farmers in Worcester County are running in. I represent the farming community, District Four covers forty-six percent of the land in Massawa County. On any given day, there are about twelve million chickens, the Holland Farm is the last dairy farm in Worcester County, the ice cream is fantastic, by the way, I highly recommend it, if you like, I've got a lot of odds out of that one, if you like ice cream, fantastic ice cream. I represent the farming community, is what I do. Obviously, I remember things very well, I've always enjoyed numbers, Mrs. Taylor, my math teacher, I think you can blame her for that, she kind of lit a fire in me at her age, I think I was in the ninth grade when I first had her and had her all the way through when I was a senior, and enjoyed every minute of it. She taught me math and taught me appreciation for foreign budgets and everything else, and that's why I think I am the best candidate.
It's tough to run up against a guy who's done such a good job as Commissioner Church has, he's been there twelve years, he does have extensive amount of experience and knowledge in the community, and I personally have learned a lot from watching him over the years. And to say whether I'm a better candidate or not, that's up to the voters inside, but I think I do offer another option. Commissioner Church was on the podium the last election, and I could say that he's doing, he did an outstanding job going on to run against him, or no one wanted to step up to try to oppose him. I feel like I have a different perspective, I'm in a different time in my life, I have young children in the school system, I recognize as a middle-class family how hard it is to make a living nowadays, I recognize that the tax rate needs to be maintained, but I also have a vision of how to see what's our county would be in the next thirty years. What is important now may change twenty, thirty years out because of the growth we're experiencing, so I think I'm looking forward to maybe some different issues such as the school system growth and public safety, making sure there's adequate police protection, there's enough money for the county, fire companies provide the EMS and the fire coverage, Worcester County Community Center in the north end, farm-to-school program for better food programs in the school. I just have a different perspective, I guess, than Commissioner Church does, not that one is better than the other, but I feel like my views and my visions are a little bit different, and for you to learn more about that, you can go to my website and learn and see how we are different, but that's really about all I have to say.
You have questions?
I have questions. My name is Woody Groves, I live in the park, and I'd like to ask Tom and Chip, if they could sort of highlight, just summarize their volunteer activity in the community since I've been here.
Since you had a Tom Wilson shirt on. I don't know if you saw in the audience, the questioner had a Tom Wilson shirt on, I'm not exactly sure.
Are there any teachers here?
Yes.
But thank you for the question and the opportunity to answer it. Here in the community, I volunteered on a number of organizations, including the Ocean Pines Chamber of Commerce, I spent an awful lot of time with the Veterans Memorial, I couldn't even tell you how many hours that I've spent honoring the people that are, who are honored at the Veterans Memorial. I've been involved in different programs, I mentioned the dog park as well as the, as well as the skate park, not myself, but my wife has volunteered to be a Sunday school teacher at St. John Newman. We've had, we've raised our three kids here, and up until recently, we still had kids in school, so we have even more time to vote in this county and to this community. But given the fact that you have a green shirt on, I'm sure that you want to hear your candidates speak, and given the opportunity. You're very welcome, Tom.
Well, I've talked before, when I retired, moved to Ocean Pines, it took about thirty minutes, and I started to get fancy, I need to be doing something, I'm a type A, I've got to be running around doing things, so I became more involved with the county itself and the processes. I've been with Deaconia for more than six years, and I've been board president for two years, treasurer, now they're vice treasurer again. Since I've been here, I've led the expansion of a number of new programs, we have a program for low-income veterans across the lower shore, working on, we have a homeless branch program, based on grants that I brought to Deaconia, in Worcester County and in Wycomico, we've kept four, three hundred families in Worcester County, in addition to our shelter and our food pantry. Just by the way, we have one people in the shelter right now, direct out of the area of the city. I've done training for the Community Foundation of Eastern Shore, the training with financial management for nonprofits all over the eastern shore, in an effort to bring more financial accountability and sustainability to nonprofits. I am the treasurer of the Lower Shore Land Trust, we're working in reserve, rural, heritage, agricultural land, and forest land in Worcester County, and we have a new trails program, we're working on building trails, a biker hyper trail for Linda and Assisee, and next week, very excited to say this, I'm going to be riding the railroad down from Frankfurt all the way down to Snow Hill, because we're looking to put a, a hyper biker trail alongside the railroad, in the railroad right away. This is something that Maryland Delaware Railroad is leading the way on, because they want to be able to use the railroad right away as close as they can. I've done a lot, and it's been fun, I've learned a lot, I've worked with almost every department in the county, threw you in the jail, where we work with some veterans, and I've enjoyed it.
It's open to everybody, but question, I go up there. Somebody else?
Yeah, I've got to, but I want to thank our representatives for your service, I want to thank all the candidates for being here, and the audience. I was hoping for a larger turnout, just like I've been hoping for a larger turnout in every election since I started. I've tried to write letters to the editor, and tried to be involved and get my neighbors and associates involved in this process. Do you have any ideas, any suggestions, what I can do to help wake up our citizens to be more involved in this process?
I think that's the situation we have throughout the county, is getting people to come out, and I think the ones that use participation are like myself, we're the older ones that we drag ourselves out, what we have to do, the younger ones go to their homework, they find their rest, so it's often difficult to find the answer.
A couple of us attended the function before we came here, and there was almost more candidates than there were participants. I really don't know, there's so much academia out there today, I think not so much with local government, state government, federal government, the people have lost an interest, they feel like they don't have a voice, and that's really sad. I can tell you on a personal note, I've had several meets and greets, I had one this past weekend, I didn't count the number of there, but there were twice as many people there as there are here tonight. I don't know, I don't know what that tells you, but there's just a whole lot of apathy out there about government, I'm not talking about our state government, I'm very excited about the local government, and it's a sad state of affairs we're in right now, I don't know the answer to your question.
Well, if you look at the primary election, it was the lowest turnout ever in the state of Maryland, because of Paul, and there were a lot of issues, there were a lot of... I think with, one of the things I think we can do, I know that the Ocean Pines were major televised, I think we should do the same thing with the county commissioners. I can't think of any reason why we can't. More transparency, let's get the issues out there to the people before they, before we talk about them at the county commissioner, before we vote on it. Let's do whatever we can to involve people, I mean, one is absolutely right, earlier today was, there were more candidates than attendees, and we just need to do better, I guess. People feel like they have no voice, and we need to make sure that they do have a voice, that we hear and we understand their concerns.
Wayne, I want to thank you for the letters that you sent to me, they're some of the most well-written letters that we get, so I appreciate it, and I know we published quite a few of them, so I want to thank you for that. Engagement really is what we need, we need engagement from our population, we need engagement from our residents. One of the things that our current county commissioner here in District Five has done over the past twelve years is have town hall meetings, and if elected, that is certainly something that I will continue to do. The format may change a little bit, it may be a little bit more inclusive, and include some additional voices at those meetings, but I'll tell you, those meetings are held in this room, and as those of us who have come to those meetings know, that there's far more people that attend those town meetings that are here this evening. It's about engagement, and it's about our elected officials engaging us in what's going on, and I think we've seen that over the past twelve years here in District Five, and continue to collect. I'm just curious, if you don't mind, how many people are here from District Two today? How many people are here from District Three? How many people are here from District Four? Five? Six? That tells you maybe the level of engagement among our different districts. Thank you, I was just curious of that, as I've been sitting. Engagement is very important, and I don't think any elected official will change it or increase level of engagement, ask a bunch of candidates, those of us. Does that answer your question, Wayne?
I have to admit, the four years that the voter, the voter app, they are, probably have been one of the most frustrating things I've experienced, I've been through it four months now. And the only people that showed up to that are our budget meetings, and it's the most important thing the county has going on, I mean, our budget last year, seventy-seven thousand, yep. I mean, a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars, over half of it to the Board of Education. The only people that showed up to the Board of Education, teachers, and they came out, but for us, the rest of the people in the county, there was no one, maybe three or four that explained it, but I mean, that's frustrating, we need for everybody to show up, it's just not teachers in this county. Two years ago, forty percent of our families that attend our schools were at or below poverty level, now it's over fifty percent. We've got to do something about this, and we've got to have, we need the people to come and talk about that budget, how we're spending, maybe we can do better, maybe we can help those forty percent that are at or below poverty level. But it, as Mr. Church said, I don't know what the answer is, to be honest with you, it's the most frustrating thing I've had.
Somebody who's lost an election due to voter app, I feel the frustration that everybody has experienced, we had, four years ago, we had the lowest turnout ever in our city for a election, it was just, it was sad. Primary this year was actually a sad number. But again, if you look at the average age of the person sitting in this room, young people don't have time, they're out there trying to make a living, they're out there trying to raise their children, do everything else they can, their family don't have time to come, they don't have time to vote, and that's what's sad, and they feel disapproached, they feel like their vote doesn't matter anyway, so why show up? As far as coming to the county commission meetings, I've sat on those benches out there in the audience, and I'll tell you what, I should put some cushions on them. But I don't think that, I don't think that anybody at this table has changed, what has to change is it has, you have to talk to your neighbors, you have to talk to your friends, you have to remind them, hey, there's a forum tonight, you should go and listen to what they have to say, hey, there's an election next week, make sure you get out and vote. There's so many opportunities to vote now in this country, that there's no reason for a person over the age of eighteen to not vote, but they find a reason. So it's up to people in the communities to make sure that the vote gets out. Politicians ultimately want that all the voters can come out, but they can't. It's sad that there's so many of us sitting here on a podium, it's great, I'm not complaining. The fact that we don't have candidates who want to take their time and represent their community is wrong.
I was born and raised in Worcester County, I am the sixth generation, I'm the sixth generation, my son's the seventh, granddaughter will be eight. Hopefully, she will arrive on time, she's due twelve, thirteen, fourteen, which would be a fantastic person, if she makes it on that day. My mother lived to be eighty-eight years old, she died October thirtieth, thousand and eight, and she voted that primary, because it was her obligation, and that's what you're missing. Young people on my bus, they can be high school kids, I buy them into the everyday, and they're on their video games, they're on their listening to music, they're doing whatever, and you talk about the world, doing...
whatever, and you talk about the world to them, and they look at you. And I did an interesting experiment the other, I guess it was the end of last year, we were getting ready to do the four-day budget, and I asked a question. I said, where's that campus at? I mean, we've only been over there how long now, right? Not one senior, with the exception of the ROTC kids on my bus, had a clue. I don't know, I, it's very frustrating. District Four voted eighteen percent. That's absolutely appalling. And I think in the last county commissioner election in Ocean Pines, I said it the highest, and it was down from the top before, and they were only running around sixty-seven percent. And quite frankly, I'm expecting somewhere around fifty-five percent, which is terrible, terrible to take down. And people will call you up and complain about a lot of things, but never take the time to vote.
It's a generational thing, I think, as well, that the newer generation, the younger kids, they're not involved. It's like a sixties-type of thing, where they hate the government, they don't want to be associated with it, they don't have time for it, they feel like their actions and reports won't be heard, and that's unfortunate, really is, it's a privilege to vote, and you know, people die in the world to have the privilege to vote, and you know, people can't take a few minutes to go and exercise that right. One thing that I feel would help is a little bit more transparency with the government as far as having the county meetings televised and available online, and then the town, Ocean City has done that, and it does allow people to stay connected with what's going on in their community. Rather than having to, you know, drive down to the county and sit through a meeting, they can sit comfortable around and watch it on the web, they can watch it on TV, and be involved. And social media is a huge thing. I've been trying to do that, I'm a little bit younger than my candidate, Mr. Church, I guess I'm, I have teenage kids, and I guess I'm in touch with more of that, but social media's important, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, you know, it's here to stay. And to involve the next generation, you have to be involved with that, and let them see that you are concerned about their concerns, and that there are changes you can make, and they can actually see it. When they go down the street, they see that there's nicer schools, there's sidewalks, or pathways, or whatever it may be. And so I think that that's the key also, is just to maintain that open community, trying to motivate the next generation, but there's no answer. People are busy, people work in two jobs, families are busy, it's just unfortunate, and hopefully it can be turned over at some point.
I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming, and here now, if there's time, if the candidates would like, give two minutes to each candidate to say basically whatever they'd like.
I would thank you guys for allowing me to come tonight, and to answer your questions, and thank you all for asking the questions. And I'm taking a step of faith that I'm elected, and I'm going to do mine very best. Thanks for...
Thank you for being here, and good night.
I was a smart guy, I think. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to thank all of you for coming.
I like what the others said, thank you to the chamber, thank you, Glenn, and thank you all for coming to see me.
I thanked the chamber at the beginning of the meeting, and I thank you again. And I, I'm correct, I was granted the privilege four years ago, to be your county commissioner, or be District Six County Commissioner, and God willing, I'll make it. I've lived long enough to be a county commissioner, and like everyone...
Yes, if he doesn't make it, I'm for it. I'd like to thank the Ocean Pines Chamber of Commerce, as you, like to thank you all for being here also, and like to remind everybody to remind their neighbors, friends, and family, and whoever else lives in this county, make sure they get out and cast a vote. It's important to the county, it's important to...
I also would like to thank everybody for coming. Those of you who try to call me at around eight-thirty at night, know it's my ice cream time. So the clock is on just about eight o'clock, it takes me about twenty-eight minutes to get home.
I want to hold the man up for his ice cream, so I appreciate everyone's ability to come out, put forward the opportunity.
Local Realtor Association is having a commission forum on October twenty-second, right here on the library, I think it's from six to eight.
It's the delegates of the senators.
Yes, the delegates, the senators, the commissioners, and the commissioners.
And on behalf of the chamber, we'd like to thank everybody for coming and doing yours.